Joining us, my name is Bob Reinhart, Vice Chair. Carol Snow, the Chair is not here today. She has drafted some new words to introduce some meetings. I just want to read them to you, just to kick things off. A new way of starting the meeting off from the last one. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 6, 2024. Please hold your order. We have three public hearings.
We really need to speak good because of the fans. That's not all. I'll have to turn it on off.
Turn it off. Okay, I can talk a little louder.
Yeah, and just kind of direct that.
I am not, I'm not, no, I hate my. I'm not usually loud enough, but that's okay. What we're doing. Okay, we have three public hearings. If you guys can't hear me online, let us know. We have three public hearings scheduled for this evening. So I want to take a few minutes to review the process for public hearings and the current hybrid format of our meetings. During the public hearing, I insist that we treat each other respectfully, do not interrupt, and follow the required structure of the meeting. Be silent, hold cell phone. Everyone will be given a fair opportunity to hear, review, submit, and comment on testimony and evidence commissioned or used to render a decision. All speakers must be recognized by the Chair before being allowed to speak. The following order must be followed. First, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The applicant or staff will share all application materials on the screen as needed. You all pretty much know this, but make sure everyone in the room is at the same same level. Comments of town agencies will then be read from each application if there are any. Next, there will be clarifying questions from the commissioners who will be recognized by the Chair before they speak. Then there will be an opportunity to clarify questions and comments from attendees who will raise their hands and be recognized by the Chair before they speak. For Zoom attendees, please raise your hand from the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. As a public hearing, must be recorded. Attendees must state their names and addresses before asking their question or making statements. Finally, the applicant will have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public commissioners and must be given the opportunity to speak here without interruption. Once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain in balance of the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to the Superior Court if desired. Decisions of this meeting are available if they happen in the meeting by calling the Land Use Department at (203) 245-5631 after 9:00 a.m. All actions taken tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff identify themselves to the record before speaking. See this evening are Mike Bogdan, Jeff Downs, John Duzza, John Morgan, Bawa Connor, and myself. Aaron Maddox, the Town Planner, is joining us. This meeting is live streamed on YouTube and will be available on the Town website for you. The Town Plan will now be deleted.
Notice is hereby given that the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 6, 2024, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in Meeting Room A, Town Campus, A Campus Drive, Madison, Connecticut, 06443. This is a hybrid meeting and attendees may also join via Zoom webinar through either the webinar link or call-in information below. Webinar ID is (915) 8196-6735. The passcode is 452138. Call-in number is (1646) 558-8656. The following application will be heard. Number 24-13, 27 Green Hill Place and 43 Boston Post Road. Map 44, lots 4 and 16, Zone R2. Applicant owner is Bruce C. Beebe. Petition for zone boundary change to amend the Madison zoning map designation from R2 residential to commercial C District. Copies of this application are available for inspection in the Land Use Office. Further details on how to participate in the webinar are posted on the Town of Madison website, www.madisonct.org. All written correspondence can be submitted to the Land Use Department via email to landuse@madisonct.org. Dial (203) 245-5631 for assistance. Dated at Madison, Connecticut, this 14th day of May, 2024. Carol Snow, Chair. Published once in the source on May 23, 2024, and once on May 30, 2024.
I'm going to rely heavily on you to help me sure I'm doing this right way, properly in the sense that I will. So we can start by opening up the continuing the first public hearing, 2406.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Jeffrey Beatty for the applicant, 20 Water Street, Philadelphia, Connecticut is my address. Before I get started, I sent a letter to the to the commission yesterday. You may not have all had an opportunity to read it. So I'm just going to hand out copies. I'm not going to read the entire letter. It's six pages long, but I am going to touch on the highlights. So this letter is our attempt to address some of the questions and comments that we received at last month's meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission with regards to our application. As you may recall, the this is the properties at 1339 and 1341 Boston Post Road, and we're seeking special exception permits to allow the construction of two mixed-use buildings at the property, housing, commercial units on the first floor of the buildings and residential dwelling units on the second and third floors. Among the questions that were discussed in some detail at the last meeting were the special exception with regard to building height. We had initially, when we submitted our application, we were requesting a 45-foot tall building. The C-zone where the property is located permits a 60, a 30-foot rather, building with this commission having the discretion to approve up to a 45-foot tall building. We've altered the height of the building to 37 feet, and I wanted, in my letter, I described why the 37-foot height is necessary. Aaron, I don't know if you have the plans from John Matthews that show it's kind of a cross-section of the building, showing the various floors and height of the building. You may recall that what we're proposing is a mansard roof with the mechanicals in quote-unquote a bathtub on the top of the building, below the part that'd be visible from the neighbors or the, from the street. Or report from the property for that.
Session?
Nope, I think it's the.
It's not in use, full set.
Okay, if you call up that other one, I may be able to work with it.
Thought that came in. Some of them came in as a set. John, some came in individually.
Okay.
From point one. I thought it was the bottom.
I was just checking out his name. The one you had initially, I can work with that.
Is it this corner?
Yes. Yep, there it is. Thank you very much. That's okay.
It's just not visible. It was the right one.
So, starting at the ground floor right here, the ceiling height for the first floor commercial units is 10 feet high. Then we've got two feet for support and conduits within the floor, within the ceiling of the first floor and the floor of the second floor. A nine-foot-high ceiling on the second floor, a one-foot-six-inch area for support and conduits between the first and the second floor, then a nine-foot-high ceiling for the third-floor dwelling units. And then these two in the aggregate come to five feet to the top of the roof. So that's how you get the, if you add these up, 10 plus 9 is 19, oh, 10 plus 2 is 12, plus 9 is 21, plus 1 foot 6 inches is 22 and 1/2 feet. Then we have nine feet here and then two feet and then another three feet. That gets you to the 37-foot height that we're looking for. In the, in our, in my letter and the proposal is that the, we don't believe the buildings are going to be overwhelming. And, and the reason we've proposed it this way is that the market for commercial space in particular is strongest for the first floor. They want retail access visibility. The footprints of the two buildings are limited to what we've proposed, and that's the maximum amount of first-floor commercial space we could get. If we were to use one foot, the second floor for residential only or commercial, you're talking about office space, and there's a greater demand right now in the town. We think going forward for residential space on the second floor than there is for commercial space. It, we'd be unlikely to get retail uses on the second floor if it were commercial. And so for maximum economic viability of the project, we feel that residential dwelling units on the second and third floor make the most sense to me, to generate the revenue needed to support the building going forward for maintenance, upkeep. There's a parking lot, we've got to maintain all that. So that's the concept between, as to why it's just the one level of commercial. And we, although if we were to go to 37 feet, the ceilings would be lower, and that would make them less desirable, in our opinion, for people out there looking to rent seven-foot dwelling will feel smaller than the nine-foot ceiling. So that's how we arrived at the seven-foot.
So that was an aesthetics decision. It was an aesthetics decision.
Well, it's an, it's an aesthetics decision in the sense that the people who are coming, going to live here are going to want to feel comfortable in the place they're living. We feel they feel more, we believe they'd be more comfortable in a nine-foot dwelling, a nine-foot-high ceiling than in the seven-foot ceiling.
And you got to the new height by eliminating the attic crawl space.
Exactly right. The attic crawl space has been limited, eliminated, and we've reduced a little bit the areas between the two floors. So that gets us down to the 37-foot height. And again, that allows us to put the mechanicals on the roof out of sight within this five-foot height of the mansard roof, so they wouldn't be on the ground surrounding the buildings. That's would otherwise be the case. We, we did ask Point One to do, prepare some renderings, which are on the, on the system, but we've got, this is the view from the post road at the 37-foot height for the proposed buildings. And you can see that it's in character with the existing building at 1343. In fact, the peaks of these two buildings are lower than the, than the cupola on the top of 1343. So, so we think that a 37-foot height for these two buildings wouldn't be overwhelming or out of character with the, with the properties that are there on the site now, particularly as you can see them from the post road. To the rear, and, and we've got Mr. Cunningham here to speak about the landscape, but with the trees that we're intending to plant here along Post Road and here set back a little bit, again, that acts as a buffer for the public driving by or walking across the other side, walking down the road on the Boston Post Road. Thanks. This is the view from Cottage Road, from behind the units. This is from the western side of Cottage Road, looking east towards Clinton. Most of these trees shown in this rendering are already there, and our plan is to leave them there and not remove them. When this plan was approved in 2004, originally, there was there was a note that invasive species would be removed, and that's still the intent, but to replace those invasive species with native tall trees to grow in, to again obscure the view of these buildings from public on Cottage Road. Of particular interest might be, this is the cupola from 1343 already there, and you can see that the trees that are already along Cottage Road, some of these are drawn in, it's not, all these trees are not there, but they obscure most of the size of the building, and we'd expect that that would be the same for the building at 1341, which would be closest to Cottage Road. 1339 will be further back. Well, this would be 1339 right here, so this is the two of them right there. So that would be the view from Cottage Road. So we're confident that with the existing trees on Cottage Road and the trees that we'd be interested in planting, that that would obscure or minimize the impact that the residents of Cottage Road would feel from the 37-foot-high buildings that we're proposing. Cunningham, we just see briefly the landscaping we're proposing.
Colored rendered time that I sent you. Good evening, John Cunningham, TEC Landscape Design, November 22. I went back down there yesterday and looked at the areas that were questioned from the, let's say, openings or areas where there might be openings. So I put together, I added some plant material to the existing plant list. The new material is in bold. So, originally, when I sent this in a month ago, I had mentioned to bring in red cedar at 7, 8 feet. With now a six-foot-high fence around it, the 7, 8-foot plant's not going to do a whole lot more than a six-foot fence. So I've upped it to 12-foot. Plant material is usually gauged. Everyone, I don't know if everyone knows this, 12 to 14, 14 to 16. I put down 12-foot-plus, okay? I'd still like to use red cedar. But you see on the plant list that I get, left you. I also listed green giant. Green giant's not a native, but it's a good grower. It's deer resistant. It gets to about 35, 40 feet tall. Red cedar's probably more in the 30, 35 feet tall. When you look at Cottage Road to the new buildings, just so everyone knows, we're 135 feet to the back of this building from Cottage Road. We're 65 to here. So when you're on the road in a car or walking down the road, your angle up to the buildings, 12 feet is going to do an awful lot, okay? What I did on the new plant list, this area my finger is right now is an area that's fairly open. There's really nothing in there to save. There's one large Norway maple, we're going to leave that, okay? And the reason we're leaving it, the fence is on our property, but the town owns 15 feet on Cottage Road. So this little gray line through here is existing vegetation. Is everything in the existing vegetation going to remain? No, it's not. Because there's some invasive material that's on our side of the property that's growing against existing red cedars. That's one reason why I suggested red cedars as my preferred choice, okay? So, every, I'm just, I'll be quick. If you have a large existing tree, it's a Norway maple, which are there. It's a white pine, which are there. The root mass of that existing tree is going to limit you from where you're planting is going to happen. Everyone's familiar, the root mass of the plant material is going to restrict you from planting in that area. So there's an opening down here, and there's an opening here. My notes say that we have 12 new trees that are going to be field-determined by myself in those open areas. We're going to remove unwanted material, both invasive or a dead piece of material, to try to make it look better. But the existing vegetation here is all going to remain. So your view of these buildings from Cottage Road is going to be very limited. Okay? And quickly, I brought the same idea here down behind, I think it's 1333, the package store. So this area is open. There are some existing maple trees on my arm, but I think we can still get some red cedar back in. Any questions on that?
Red cedar down here will be the same height.
No, I put them in, if you, if you look at the plant list, there's a lower grade down there?
Oh, actually, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
John, is there a fence along the rear property line?
Yes, there is. All the way down here.
Existing or?
No, brand new.
And that's?
Six feet high. Yes, we'd like to use a white cedar, we'd like to use a white cedar six-foot-high without a top, so it's a six-foot solid piece of fence.
Which is consistent with the previous, the old, original of people that ran the fence.
Yes.
There as well. Okay.
Were the white pines that were there now planted before?
They weren't planted. There's one white pine, it's right here. It was existing. So they developed everything. White pine is native, but the caliper's probably 36 inches. It was a native tree, they probably left it when they developed everything. I would.
Nice tall trees.
Oh, yes, there's a big stand of red cedar and, and white pine. I wouldn't plant white pine, and the reason being, if you drove down Cottage Road, you can look at the existing white pine and see that the branch structure is probably 25 to 30 feet off the grade. So it doesn't, it doesn't really soften anything. The red cedar and the green giant, which I'm hoping it's red cedar, will stay from the floor up to the mature height. And we'll do a lot more for that.
We did. We also submitted photos of the existing trees right now. I think, I'm happy to show them to you, but I think you have an idea of what, what the impact is going to be of opposing and how we're going to offset the size to prevent the buildings from appearing to be overwhelmed. So for those reasons, for the calculation of the 37-foot height was built on making the units as economically viable as possible because once the building is built, the rent income and condominium, common charges of its condominium are going to be what's used to maintain the building and the grounds. Those, the more consistent we can, the more revenue we can generate from those units, the greater the likelihood of the financial health of the, of the project, which will ultimately maintain its better maintained, kept and better up. So we feel that the 37-foot height is is an acceptable height. It's not the 45 feet.
I haven't seen any renderings of a whole complex, including the existing buildings, the dermatological. These are big buildings, no doubt about it. They're going to dominate that whole space. Is there, is there a rendering of the whole complex?
I don't believe we have a rendering of the entire complex from the.
See, this, this, this rendering, from the perspective, you've got that, you've got the dermatology building closest to us. It looks so big. It's, it kind of doesn't give you the right perspective of how big this building is. Aaron, say to the original landscape plan, 2005, 2004, shows the entire.
The front elevation?
No, it's not, it's not, it's rendered.
We have this street elevation.
And looking at that, the buildings look extremely big.
That's the previous height.
Right.
Did you edit that in the new section? Is that lower? Yes. You revised this.
This is, this is.
I have it too.
At the current elevation of 30, current height of 37 feet. So it's the same size.
Yeah, here I can zoom in for you, John.
It's four feet lower.
Right. Right down at the bottom. So it's, it's approximately the same height as 1343, but below.
Yeah, yeah, but much, much larger, much, much larger.
Understood, but they're, they're within the footprint of what's permissible as of right on the site.
Just something forward for you.
I understand.
You just came up with a larger building. Just how it will fit into the existing complex. You have the softer Collins Bagel building on, on the right there. You've got these two pretty massive square buildings on, on the, on the left side.
It, it's smaller in, in length along the ground than Collins Bagel building, both of these buildings.
Those buildings have some character.
But that's.
That's just aesthetically. Just from a point of how it fits into the whole. This is, this is an entryway into town. It's a first impression for somebody coming in. Those are two big buildings.
But, but that's why we did this rendering, to show what it's going to look like from somebody coming into town. This is taken from the eastern side of the property. So somebody driving into town, this is what they're going to look at. So I don't think it looks out of character next to the building at 1343.
Go on, go on.
So with regard to the floor area ratio, the I would like to point out in the letter that I submitted to the town and what I handed to you, there's a slight variance, and I've circled it on your letters, on page, page two. Page three, exactly. That's to reflect, it's actually a lower percentage over the 200% ratio than what I had represented in my letter yesterday. Mr. Matthews pointed out that the number I had inserted was incorrect. So that's why I wanted to submit this to you tonight to show what the, what the correct ratio is of square footage, what the excess amount of residential to commercial square footage is. Again, the 200% ratio is a limit that this commission in its discretion can either eliminate or reduce. And for the reasons I mentioned earlier, the percentage that we're asking for is to generate, is to sustain the economic viability of the site greater than a one-story residential, one-to-one ratio would. Or if we added commercial units to the second floor, they wouldn't command the same rent that the first four commercial units would. And so we felt that the more, the more sustainable, the more economically viable outlook or proposal would be to have dwelling units on the second and the third floor. By necessity, if we're putting two floors of residential dwelling units in the building, they're going to exceed the 200% ratio, particularly when you factor in staircases, hallways, and elevators that are going to be used for, to access residential units. We, yes, go ahead.
So if I did these calculations correctly, 1339 would be a 300% capacity. And the 1341 would be about 275%?
That's correct. Yes. Which, again, your regulations permit you to make those waivers, to make those reductions.
Right.
Or to, or to disregard them entirely.
We'll make them here, though. We said precedent.
I, I don't think that's the case. With a special exception permit, you're viewing each application on its own merits. So you can say, we think it makes sense at 1339 and 1341, given the overall pattern of development of this site. But if someone came in and said, this site, you, you have to analyze it. You have to analyze it on a case-by-case basis. They could, they could refer to it, but you could say, well, that was different because it was part of this overall pattern of development between 1333 and 1347. They could, they could refer to it, but you could say, well, that was different because it was part of this overall pattern of development between thirteen thirty three and thirteen forty seven. At some other site, that may not be the case, it may be more of a freestanding development at that site.
Percentage by eliminating, changing two units to one bedroom.
We did do that.
You did two units for one building?
We, we, we did two, two, we converted, we reduced two, two-bedroom units in thirteen thirty nine to two one-bedroom units. And we reduced two, two-bedroom units in thirteen forty one to two one-bedroom. So, so where before there were twenty four two-bedroom units in the two buildings, there are now twenty two-bedroom units and four one-bedroom units. Two one-bedroom units in thirteen thirty nine, two one, one-bedroom units in thirteen forty one.
Yeah, so the population has increased, actually, decreased your residential.
No, it's, it's the same, the, the units are the same square footage.
What that did, John, was take, there used to be storage units on the first floor that were, that now that space turned back into the commercial.
Numbers we had, and maybe I've got the wrong numbers here, please. Information comes in. But, okay. Just keep going.
So that's, that's the reason we're making the request, because again, it goes back to the economic viability of the project. And we believe that it serves, the commission has the right to, to waive these restrictions if you believe that it helps diversify the Madison Housing portfolio and does not substantially erode the commercial development of the district. We believe that there is a demand for one- and two-bedroom dwelling units in the town of Madison. And that introducing twenty four new units, one-bedroom, twenty-two-bedroom and four-one-bedroom units, that addresses and helps diversify Madison Housing portfolio by introducing units that there's a scarcity of. And also, just what we're proposing does not substantially erode the commercial development of the district for the reasons that we mentioned. We've, that I mentioned, we're putting commercial uses on the first floor of the buildings and the office space that would likely be the occupants of commercial units on the second floor. There's, there's not as great a demand for that, for that use as there is for residential dwellings. So for those reasons, we would ask that the commission waive the, reduce the requirement of the two hundred percent cap on dwellings, dwelling units to commercial floor. The reduction in the number of bedrooms also had an impact on the parking calculation. If you could call up Mike Ott's latest drawing. Just the first page. Maximize that. So with regard to thirteen thirty nine, when we reduced, when we changed two of the units to one-bedroom units, that increased the number of spaces that we have. It reduced the required, number of required par- parking spaces to fifty one. Thirteen thirty nine has sixty two parking spaces on the plan that we've designed, so we have a surplus of eleven units on thirteen thirty nine. We were, we were not, we didn't have as much of a surplus as we had. If you scroll it down just to thirteen forty one. On thirteen forty one, the number of seats in the restaurant is now one hundred. That requires twenty five spaces with the reduction of the, of the change of the two-bedroom, two, two-bedroom units to one-bedroom units. The total number of parking spaces required becomes seventy six. And the number of spaces that we have on thirteen forty one is sixty two. So we have a fourteen-space deficit on thirteen forty one and an eleven-space surplus on thirteen thirty nine for a total parking space deficit of three parking spaces. We also have the cross ax, cross access and parking agreements, which allow us to use the parking spaces of thirteen forty three. And at thirteen thirty three, if we need to use those spaces and to dra- travel through those drivels. This commission has in its power the right to waive or reduce the number of required parking spaces. We think it's extremely unlikely under optimum, under maximum use that we're going to be using all the same, all of the parking spaces on thirteen thirty nine and thirteen forty one at the same time. Even if that were the case, and we were three spaces short from maximum use, we have the right to use the spaces at thirteen thirty three and at thirteen forty three. And attached to my letter, there's a schedule of the office hours for the businesses at those properties. And Package Store at thirteen forty, thirteen thirty three is open from, will be ten in the morning, nine in the morning, Monday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday, and Sunday it opens at ten. And it's open until eight AM, Monday through Thursday, nine PM, Friday and Saturday, and su- Sunday it closes at six. So there's activity during those periods of time, but likely, un- unlikely that people are parking there for extended periods of time. At thirteen forty three, the main commercial tenant is Integrated Dermatology. They're open from seven thirty in the morning till four thirty at night, Monday through Friday, so they're not open at all on the weekend. They're also closed from four thirty on, which with the restaurant at thirteen forty one, is likely to generate most of its traffic in, in the, in the evenings and on the weekends. So the likelihood of there being excess spaces at thirteen forty three, which will be right next door to thirteen forty one, is fairly strong. We believe that even without, without the access to additional parking at thirteen thirty three and thirteen forty three, it's unlikely that we'd maximize the number of spaces on these two parcels. But with the access to those properties and with the hours of operation of those other properties, we don't think that there's going to be any problem with people finding parking. I would note that your regulations, section eight point one, say that an applicant can look to parking facilities within a thousand feet of the proposed use. All of the properties within this complex are within a thousand feet of thirteen forty three, thirteen forty, forty one and thirteen thirty nine. So for those reasons, we would ask that the commission consider waiving the requirement that we have, uh, this, the maximum number of parking spaces that are required by the zoning regulations, since we're off by three. And we have access to parking spaces on the adjacent properties. So with that information at hand, I think the engineering plans, the architectural plans, and the renderings prepared by point one show that what we're proposing at the thirty seven foot, foot height is not going to be out of character or out of, out of place relative to the buildings immediately adjacent to it. With the landscaping design that we've presented, there are going to be buffers between the view of the buildings from Boston Post Road and from Cottage Road. We believe that there's, we've maximized the amount of most desirable commercial space on, in both buildings on the first floor. We're trying to incorporate dwelling units that we believe will generate revenue to sustain the, the appearance of the building, the parking area, and contribute to the overall well-being, well-being of the commercial development within this site. We also believe that, you know, there, there'll be a significant tax benefit to the town by adding these two buildings, the employees at the restaurants, the customer, the, the businesses operating on the first floor, and the people paying taxes for the residential dwelling units on the second and third floor. We did submit a coastal site plan application, which we really haven't spent, spent much time talking about throughout this process, but I do have Michael Ott available to walk you through that right now, because we are within the coastal site plan review area. We've done a num, we've done a number of tests on the property and designed a stormwater management system in such a way that we believe that there will be very little impact with the proposed dwelling units, with the proposed billing, buildings on the coastal resources. So I'd like to have Mr. Ott speak to that now.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff. Good evening, just for the record, I'm Mike Ott, I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summerhill Civil Engineers here on Wall Street in Madison. Um, the, the municipal coastal site plan review application for, for this particular site is fairly straightforward. Um, because of the site's location and in, in an upland area and its distance from any surface water resources. The, the coastal, if you take a look at the application form, the coastal resources are shorelands, which are upland areas out, located outside of special flood hazard area zones. Our site, as noted both on our drawings and the project narrative, as well as in our stormwater management report, is not located in a special flood hazard area zone. The closest surface water resources are some five hundred and fifty feet to the northeast on the opposite side of Curry Cross Road. Uh, that, that's also noted in our stormwater management report. And I believe to, to reinforce that the, the application for this particular site is pretty straightforward. Um, I think town staff chose to refer the application to the Connecticut DEEP. And they sent back a letter, and Aaron, I was, I don't know if you can put your fingers on that easily. Um, I tr- I tried to locate it, but, but could not find it. Um, but I, I think it, I think it'd be worth just kind of summarizing it for the, for the commission, if you could.
Page one of the report highlights the project description. Page two identifies, analyst identified what coastal resources were present onsite and adjacent to the site. Uh, those, the only coastal resources that were checked were general coastal resources, which apply to every coastal site plan, essentially. Let's see. Uh, all the rest are not applicable. The boxes, as far as adverse impacts on coastal resources, each one of these items was checked as non-applicable. And, um, general coastal use policies that apply to this application are general development. Um, and again, just as with general coastal resources, general development policies are applicable to all applications. Adverse impacts on potential future water-dependent development activities and opportunities, they do not apply. There are no issues of concern that are highlighted in the, in the comments, and ultimately, the summary and recommendations. Do, would you like me to read them? Or are you? Yeah. Yes. Okay. Um, the analysis, based on the information provided, the applicant has proposed the development of two parcels of land on the eastern portion of Boston Post Road in Madison. These parcels are part of the marketplace of Madison Complex, which was originally approved to consist of four separate buildings. However, only two buildings have been constructed so far, leaving the two subject lots vacant for over twenty years. The proposal aims to fill this gap by constructing two three-story mixed-use buildings on the vacant parcels. Each building will feature commercial spaces on the first floor and residential units on the upper floors. The commercial spaces will include amenities such as community rooms and storage cubicles, while the residential units will range in size and feature balconies. Access to the buildings will primarily be through a new shared driveway with a neighboring package store. The project includes ample parking spaces, including easy charging stations, and there are cross easements in place for access and shared parking with neighboring properties. Additionally, the project includes provisions for emergency access and underground utilities. Landscaping and sight lighting will adhere to the originally approved plans for the marketplace of Madison Complex. Overall, the proposal aims to complete the envisioned marketplace of Madison Complex as initially approved. Comments are that the applicant shall ensure installation and maintenance of appropriate soil erosion and sedimentation control measures during the planned period. And the finding is that this project is consistent with all applicable coastal policies, supporting documentation, GIS map depicting the natural diversity database areas map is also included here. Um, and there's no additional state permits that are required from DEEP associated with this permit. And the analyst was Jason Head. And this is the, just to highlight, the natural diversity database map, usually you'll see a, well, you can see here, there's a polygon in this general area.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, I'd be glad to, to answer any questions if the, if the commission has any on the, on the application.
The only thing I would just add is, and I didn't include it in my letter, handed out to you, was that also we would need a waiver of section eight, section eight point four of your regulations provision against parking in the front yard for commercial properties. And we request that because as you can see from thirteen forty three and thirteen forty seven, and also at thirteen thirty three, there is parking in the front yards of those properties. And we would anticipate that you, for consistency's sake, you'd want that to be the same for this property as well. We have, we, I, I sent the most recent version of the plans to the engineer for Ms. Mason, the owner of the, the member of the LLC that owns the Package Store. He reviewed them and said that they were fine from his perspective. Attorney Crosby had some minor comments and revisions that he sent to me on Friday of last week, and I wrote back to him this morning to let him know that his revisions were fine. So from my perspective, and I believe from Attorney Crosby's, it's, it's resolved, so.
And we use the rental units to have a sign parking.
We, in, in my letter, we would be, we're going to encourage people to use those areas for residential parking. The concern I have with specifically designating them as residential parking is that we are subject to those cross-access agreements from, from the other properties. And we, and those folks would have the right, unequal right to use those spaces. And practically speaking, I believe that most of the people who would be living in the two buildings would be parking there anyhow. And so the commercial visitors to the property would be parking off the Boston, Boston Post Road rather than traveling around behind parking spaces. I'm sorry?
The restaurant?
Would be parking out in here, would be, would be our suspicion. And if this lot were full, again, dermatology's closed at four thirty, there's spaces in front of thirteen forty three for them to park. There's likely going to be space from thirteen forty three. Based upon the plans that we've submitted, we think that the introduction of the restaurant, commercial, commercial space in this location on Boston Post Road will substantially serve the public convenience and welfare by creating space for new commercial opportunities, opportunities in the C District. The appropriate use of neighboring properties will not be substantially or permanently injured by the proposed development of these subject properties. And I'm saying this because these are the criteria for you to review when considering a special exception permit. We believe that with the site plan, with the location of the buildings, the footprints of the buildings, those meet the requirements of your zone. With the requested waiver to allow the buildings to be thirty seven feet tall, that would be in keeping with your regulations. That would be in keeping with your regulations. You have the, you have the authority to do that. The parking and the driveway layout are permitted uses in the district, and although we're three spaces short on the two sites. We believe that with the cross access easements and the hours of operation, it's unlikely that we will ever be at maximum capacity on. Thirteen thirty-nine and thirteen forty-one, but if we were, we've got areas to go to on either side. We've addressed the concerns with regard to. The Hammond asset package store, we've attempted to address the concerns. With the folks on Cottage Road by landscaping, by leaving the existing trees there and introducing new trees to minimize the impact of these buildings. We believe that proposed use, the uses that we're proposing are in accordance with the comprehensive plan of development. As they encourage development in an existing commercial district in a way that complements the existing development. And the neighboring commercial properties. Our hope is that people coming to the restaurant. They may not go to Cohen's Bagels at least before they come to the restaurant, but hopefully it'll stop fixing up on the way home or visit the other commercial enterprises in the area. Including the retail spaces on in thirteen thirty-nine. And also in character, we believe that the introduction of these buildings will enhance the character of the town. And this is an existing commercial site on the Boston Post Road. One of the goals of your comprehensive plan of development is to avoid commercial creep along other sections of the Boston Post Road. What we're proposing is in the C District in an area that's already been fairly substantially developed with commercial use. Given the commercial development of the properties to the west and to the east of thirteen thirty-nine, thirteen forty-one. We believe that the location of this site is well suited to the proposed development. Does not impair the present or future development of the area, particularly since what we're really trying to do is complete. The development of the area in the way that was contemplated by this commission, would it improve the Madison marketplace in two thousand and four. As I mentioned, when completed, we expect this property will generate significant revenue, tax revenue to the town. And for the foregoing reasons, we respectfully request this commission grant the requested waivers and approve the proposed applications. The special permit application and the coastal site. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. Akas, Akka approved the initial height at forty-five feet. They approved it at forty-one. They have not seen the thirty-seven foot height yet. We don't anticipate that they would object to. Lower height of the building, but we have not been before them with this latest iteration. The design is the same, it's just the height has been. I'm all done unless there's any additional questions. Is there any additional staff comments?
I provided this report today into the record. Attorney Beatty touched on most.
Yeah.
All confirmed that it was basically highlighting all of the requests before you. And the changes that have been made since the last year, so I don't. I'll happily submit it into the record, but I don't think I need to.
The first, thank you for reducing that, taking what we said last time into the heart and reducing the height of the building, I think that helps. We appreciated the feedback and we tried to try to incorporate it.
I'm still. It's still a big building. I'm still working that through my head as far as how it's going to fit within that space, given what the rest of the. The room looks like there. So that's still just a go through my head. I think it it makes more sense now than it did before. Honestly, I think this is just comments. It makes a little more help make thirteen forty-three make sense, whereas before that really didn't seem to make sense. So that actually might help. But one of the things that is, I'm still stuck on is I think. Additional residential use above the two percent. And you find that with the layout of the park, not necessarily a number of park. A layout of the park. I'm still concerned about the. The negative effect that could have on the retail business. It's still in the back of my mind that. There's a lot of people who would be living there, they're going to want the best spot and the best spots will be against the bill. So how how can that be addressed?
Right, well, we can, to the extent we don't violate the common access agreements, we'd be happy to indicate, you know. Residential parking or sign towards that, but if if you could call up. Mike Ott, I think, Mike, maybe you could tell us what page of your drawing the parking count is on. So that might help Aaron pull it up quickly.
Oh, the the parking count is on the title sheet, the very first sheet. The site, it's on the site layout plan, I think it's sheet C two point four.
Great, so if you, Aaron, if you could enhance that a little bit. So it's, I know we can't look at both screens at the same time, but for thirteen thirty-nine. The number of required spaces for the residential use is twenty-two. That's the ten. Two bedroom units and the two one bedroom units. So if you look here, there's fifteen spaces right here, seven here, eight here. And there's another seven here, so that gets us up to twenty-two right there. There's seven here, so that's twenty-nine. There's five here, so that gets us to thirty-four. So that's more than the twenty, that's twelve more than the twenty-two spaces that we need and. I I understand your concern that they may want to park closer here, but. This is going to be the primary entrance into this building for the residential units and just speaking for myself. I would prefer to park where I know there's going to be less traffic, people coming in a car, which would likely be in this air, in these areas here. If we move over a little bit this way, then we've got eleven spaces here. I don't think I'm double counting that. And then four spaces here, so that's another fifteen spaces. Which I think would compass nearly all of the residential parking required because we'd also have twenty-two spaces. Needed for the building for the residents of thirteen forty-one, so that would be in the aggregate forty-four spaces that we'd need. And I think if we go.
What's the primary entrance for thirteen forty-one?
Thirteen forty-one's right here as well. So this is the main entrance into these buildings. So I I understand your concern, but I just think practically speaking, most of the residents are going to park in these areas. Rather than rather than in the commercial, the quote unquote, commercial park.
Yeah, is it possible to. Specify parking just for retail? I'm not, I'm not going to assume what kind of stores are going to be, I'm assuming they're retail and it's foot traffic and it's. People in the store that make the difference.
Right.
The restaurant's on the right, so you don't really anything there.
The restaurant's going to be in here, correct?
So is it possible for the rest of the spots, those ones against the building to be designated as retail parking? But give the store owners the right to make a phone call and say get this car out of here.
I I again, with, I think that we're at a bit of a, an issue with the cross accesses, we could say, you know. Preferred parking for, we 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 may be able to put up signage that would indicate. Exactly, but I don't think from an enforcement perspective, we'd really be without our rights to do that because the idea of the of the. Cross access and parking ring is that all of the units across can share it to the extent they needed to, but. But but I I do think, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind is there's. The primary access way in is here off the Boston Post Road. If you're coming in. To go to any of these stores, you're likely going to come in and try to park here. You're less likely to go up and around the back and are also going to come in. And go up through this, through this driveway here and. I don't want to say hopefully, but my my expectation is that some of the people coming to visit these stores may never even make it. Behind these buildings to to realize that there's parking back there to to see that.
I really appreciate what you're saying. We have seven bagel locations up in the city. We struggle with this every day. One employee parks in front, he's older, there's really not much. I park on the side, one up there, I get that. And I can appreciate that because if someone's paying one point three million for condo, they're going to want to park. So there's, there's a learning for this and training that has to be done. You know, we do a thirty minute sign for retail. But if someone's paying me five thousand a month for space, maybe that's a puzzle for an hour and a half. So just like someone can park at Cohen's in the morning and spend a couple hours there reading a book, they can keep their partner and walk over to get lunch at the restaurant. So that's a very important question and I appreciate it. We 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 really don't know, I think, again, it's gonna, it almost happens. It fixes itself, so. You know, the residents come, they might commute, take the train, they might have one car, a family of three or four, they come for a hundred and four days a year. We hope to get some, you know, local Madisonites, we do, but I I really understand the question and I'm I'm concerned about that too. And a lot of parking homes, if they paid all that money for a condo, the pay combo fees. So I I I think. It's it's. It's just gonna happen. I I I really don't know the. How, but it will, it just does.
Yeah.
You know, one of the properties we have, I can pull it up, the camera right now, there's no parking, so. They have a karate place, they have sushi place, a package store, there's absolutely no parking. And the seafood place next door will not let us cross over. Right, but we have processes. So we struggle with that every day. So I I do understand the question, I appreciate it, and we'll do our best, whether that's in a lease. You know, maybe we do one designated spot, but we really can't with respect to the cross easements. That the Dowler family was forward thinking that did, I I think it helps everybody. You 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 know, I you know, when you can't crush, you know, CBS, you got to shop right, you got to set, you got to come up with a lot like, I always say, who's the engineer's business? So I I hope that helps answer your.
Stephen Dowler, AD and Verblaine, I actually manage the properties next door and so I very easily. Daily basis, how the act of residence and commercial across all the properties. And start with communication. We talk to all tenants, I have tenants down the street, actually another property we developed and we're a former racquetball club, it's now. Medical building in Expendio, but we also have shared parking. But this particular doctor will show up five or six times in the morning, park right up front. We go inside for all day long, we never know that he stayed in the prime spot. Patients, we had to communicate with them on that. It was a matter of keeping communication and knowing the property itself and we will continue to have a relationship here with the property because it is substantially. What was approved prior to the size of the buildings, the person of the buildings, the footprint of the buildings, where it's approved twenty years ago. And as a gateway, and I do agree that it is a gateway, formerly it was a dilapidated. Parking and not just that sat vacant and disrepair, that's where thirteen forty-three is today, it's a church looking building. But the, how these integrate together and how they work on a daily basis, it's really about communication, knowing how they actually work. The cross parking easements are that, it's actually John Cunningham, in his auto, was on the tree front. Way back when, and I thought this tree could CLP ever source by cutting them down because of the slow observation to soften. Parking and buildings themselves, so the, you know, just regarding parking itself. It is integrated, it is something that has been enjoyed across the properties. Thirteen thirty-three and thirteen thirty-seven primarily, and it's been sealed. And it's been a whole host of different businesses and individuals living there that have worked jointly to each other. And for nearly twenty years, we've made that very comprehensive for everybody and more about. Thank you.
Any determination with the units will be leased, units will come in.
If not, any, any comments or questions from the public in the room? Anyone online have a question?
They'll jump to the top.
So then we move to.
So questions and and just to confirm, no comments from those in attendance via Zoom? Just wanted to make sure. So if if the commission doesn't have any other questions or seeks additional information. And if the applicant has included their presentation, then we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Just I didn't know if there was anybody else speaking in favor or.
Oh, I I'm sorry, I just. Yes, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to say, only those in opposition, it was general, anyone with. Questions, this, we've had public comment before, that's why. Specify. Attorney Crosby has raised his hand. Attorney Crosby, can you unmute?
Yep, am I on mute now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we support the application. As you know, I represent the owner of the Hammond asset package store property. And that attorney Beatty accurately reflected and represented our agreement and we're in a hundred percent agreement with the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is no one else? Alright, okay, thank you very much, thank you. Alright.
So that concern, which is a discretion anyway. Seem to be addressed. Also, it's not final, but.
I would agree with that. I think there's a natural layout of parking. Just send people to the right place, you know, residents.
If anything I worry about parking in the restaurant. That can maybe underestimate. Not great. Very well thought out.
I think it's definitely needs something there. This is, this is a good idea. Struggle with the floor ratio. I go back to a part of the time for residents who mentioned. Probably felt like we're developing. That whole area with residential in in pretty. Heavy capacity in residential. We've got the, we've got the uh arena landing across the street, but someone's gonna buy in front to us. We're gonna wanna do pretty much the same thing. It's my my concern about setting precedent of 300% versus 200%. I mean, I wish, I wish this could, if this came into 200%.
Kind of the same place that.
I'm gonna have to ask everybody to face the the microphone because I I'm not catching you and our. Our clerk is not catching what you're saying, so that means our our audience uh online is not catching you either.
John, speak again.
Um no, if you could just. Recap that, well, just briefly, you're, it it was the 200% that you struggled with.
Yes, yes.
I I I heard that.
I'm I'm struggling with the 300%. If this came in as 200%, I I. I think the second though, the parking, I think parking's addressed. I mean, building is big. It'd be interesting to see when it's finished and what actually fits in the space. But for me, it's it's the it's the residential space. Yeah. Creating a special exception.
I'm not an engineer or known for my aesthetic sensitivities, but what was the rationale for 200%? Know why that's in there?
I don't, I mean, I.
I came in early and looked there.
It's it's a newer, that regulation, Bob, did not, was not in existence when the original application came forward. Um it's it's a newer regulation from the, you know, that that came into effect after 2004. And that's where we are. You know, I think.
It says somewhere, somewhere, there was something.
So I would, I would say, I would, I would echo John's thoughts. I think the parking has been addressed. I think you need more than 10 employees for a 100 seat restaurant, you probably asked him. But I think you're underestimating how many employees, but I still think there's enough parking. So I think the parking has been addressed. Still concerned about the retail, but I think you said, I think it'll just work itself out. I appreciate that the height is much lower. If anything, I think. It'll make that area make more sense. The church, the cemetery technology building.
Yep.
That doesn't fit.
1343.
Because it's gonna be scaled. So I'm okay with that, but the. The number of people is still the one thing that catches me. And I think that's from. Both retail, commercial side and also. John said it's the impact on the people who live behind it. So now the people who have been living there for a long time. Have the two new developments on the other side of Cottage Road, there are two, right? And so there's a, there's a big influx of people coming into that area. And I'm not sure that proper attention is given to the traffic. But I'm not sure how to control the take. Not sure there's an answer to that one, other than blocking all of the tragedies.
Actually, never we did sidewalks.
Yeah, that's a great point. Towns shut sidewalks in general.
So one thought about the the 200% residential commercial is if the number of residents overwhelmed. I think that might be consideration, there's so much, so many resident buildings put in there.
Yeah.
Would that overwhelm?
Yeah.
That might be a way.
Yeah, kind of like on the edge of, is this gonna overwhelm the commercial or not? I mean, there aren't that many. Fairly large, so. Doos is the number, but still, that's the. Um balance. It's gonna be moving more to one side of these, it's too, it's right on the edge.
Somehow, I'm sure we might ignorance here a little bit, but I don't, why, I don't see that. It's a million dollar condominium that somehow there's gonna be all kinds of rowdy street people. Interfering with the commercial of the the residents.
Yes. So you're right, there's there's 12 units in each building, the original and now. 10 of them are two bedroom units and two of them each building are one bedroom units. The prior approval had 10. It it is, it is an increase um from the previous. Originally approved application. However, I think I put that in my, although I don't.
Is there a mechanism for us to make an approval? With a condition that post completion, there is some kind of traffic analysis?
For what?
Make sure there aren't a bunch of cars traveling up in that cottage room.
Well, you have a traffic analysis by SLR.
I know, but that was just for this property and it stayed in the apartment. It didn't take into account the other two developments which we asked for. I forgot that.
I'd have to reread that to see if that's.
The FDA can say creative approved, but tell us how it's going and we can change our mind and we can maybe do something different. So it could be if there is this tremendous influx of traffic, we can. Have a way to address it.
Get to speak up, Mike.
Make that entrance from the back and no exit. One way, I don't know.
I believe the emergency. Yeah, I I my my understanding of the traffic report, just from recalling the last presentation was that. Is it that additional developments are taken into consideration when in the projections? I I think it was Neil who was here from SLR who explained that. Process. Explain the. It was two meetings ago.
You know, it's called the marketplace of Madison. I have a suspicion that market mechanisms would deal with some of the concerns. Repeat, okay, well, it seems maybe it's called the marketplace of Madison, right? Sorry again, it's okay, it's the marketplace of Madison. I suspect that in practice, none of these concerns would be dealt with. Through the humans getting together and saying, hey, we need more parking spaces, let's do so and so. That they're not gonna, it's not gonna be static, which is healthy. Planning involves changing. So I I, you know, compared to uh, it may not be perfectly what I would do, but so what? And you're a real positive addition to the town which needs more housing, needs another restaurant. Just repeating myself.
I I suppose you might have brought up the traffic and the future.
Yeah.
Traffic projections, um that is discussed in page, on page five of the traffic study. Um with a future, estimated future roadway traffic, I I recall Neil explaining that, but I couldn't.
Yes, with any reason.
A- 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 answer the entire, but it does take into consideration the 35 Cottage Road development that is not yet. Uh built of 18 units on the the western end of Cottage Road. It does take into consideration 31 units. Uh at 131 Cottage, that's the Wellington, as well as this Marina Landing across the street, 168, 178, which is 37 two bedroom units. Retail office and the Marine. Um and then there's, there's a growth rate projection that was also accounted for in um. In those figures. So if you, if you want to see that.
Now I remember.
The study, yes, this is linked to the documents on the website.
Any other points for deliberation?
Just quickly, I mean, we're going in traffic, we're in a relationship, which is not our concern, unfortunately. It's the traditional cottage road. And the construction itself is. And it could use sidewalks, it's a lot to do with, it's not part of the discussion here. One, two, I mean, how much time do we spend on the PIC discussion talking about the first supply housing and making more units available? Now, at the end of the 20 year process, it's right here in front of us in a urban location, it seems like this is a really easy decision, I'm sure. That's all. Well, we talked about that in the C discussion, right? It's basically not simple, yeah, it's. So here we are.
In addition to.
Right. Okay, so someone wanna make a motion?
Sure you do.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
No.
I can pull it up for you. So I I have a draft resolution. Prepared for you um that. I'm happy to give two comments on uh when you're in your discussion or or prior to making your motion. I did want to. Bring to your attention, and I can pull this up before you. Make the motion. Uh one of the draft. One of the draft conditions that I uh added was similar to the previous um application. And um that special exception language um from that approval. Spoke to the installation of the six foot privacy fencing along the property boundary on Cottage Road. And so in this particular area, this mirrors the previous um condition of approval. Landscaping along Cottage Road shall provide year round screening between this use and the adjacent residential uses. Uh the vegetation removed for construction purposes or to eliminate invasive species shall be replaced with plantings. And if you'll notice. My recommendation is that it should also read additionally, the six foot fence proposed, or you know, shall be uh installed along the western. Excuse me, along the Cottage Road boundary for the full width of the park.
All right, yeah.
Also, Aaron, line item six is twice, you need to change that. That one should be a seven. And that should be, and as you say, colored.
There was one additional um thing that I wanted to note for you before um you make the motion. The um architectural plans show site work proposed on the ham and asset package store property. That property is not part of this application. So the um staff's recommendation would be that when. Work is, you know, when property owner looks to commence work on the ham and asset package store. That property is also subject to a separate set plan evaluation. Um and those approvals should be.
Okay.
Saw at that time. That, and that's all I, so. Scroll up for you, sweetie.
Hold it right there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read from here until I get down to you.
Okay, I'm just gonna let folks see.
All right, ready? Go to.
Well, the Madison County and zoning commission approved application number 24-6. 1339 and 1341 Boston Post Road, map 31, lot 34 and 34, dash, 61. Don C, owner HBS Associates, 1339 Boston Post Road LLC. 1341 Boston Post Road LLC, and 1333 Boston Post Road. See, applicant 1339 and 1341 Boston Post Road LLC, special exception. Special exception permit, section 6.1, 2.2, 6.15, 2.2 and 6.13G, and both were cited when the application is constructed. Choose based on mixed use buildings, 45. Oh, that's not correct.
There, there's amendment language in here, yes.
With commercial uses on the fourth floor and 12 residential units on the upper floors, 24 units total, and associated site improvements showing application materials. And supporting documentation and a set of plans entitled the Market Place of Madison, 1339 and 1341 Boston Post Road, US report. Madison, Connecticut, Summer Hill, Sideline Years, Land Service, DC dated 2024. Device in May 28th of 2024, architectural plans by John E. Matthews. Architecture and planning, Market Place of Madison, 1339, 1341 Boston Post Road. Sheet A1, A1 dot one, A M two dash, M two six. S C R C P, S L dash one B, excluding sheet C S, S T dash E, L P dash one, dated May 23rd, 2024. Land State Design LP Women, Market Place of Madison, Madison, Connecticut, by Text, Land State Design Incorporated, dated November 12th, 2024. And devised in March 28th, 2024, with the following conditions. One, at the zoning enforcement officer, we know that these will be hours prior to commencement, many regulated activities. Two, that all invasion and segregation controls be installed prior to any disturbance and be maintained in the duration of construction activities. And until the site is sufficiently stabilized and is satisfied of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, block line invasion shall be filed on Madison land records prior to the issues of a preliminary certificate of zoning compliance. Four, the sub-service storm water system shall be inspected by the zoning engineer during the construction to verify consistency with the approved plans. Five, as built survey of the ground base including stormwater system components. Shall be submitted to the commission with written verification from a licensed engineer. That the system is constructed in accordance with the design plans. The supplemental shall be completed prior to the issue of the final certificate of zoning compliance. Six, a condensed inspection and maintenance strike shall be prepared by the assigned engineer identifying the inspection. Management maintenance frequency required for each component of the stormwater system. This charge shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer. For a review prior to the issuance of the final certification of zoning compliance. Seven, all site lighting shall be installed according to plans with a color temperature of 3,000 K. Eight, landscaping along college room shall provide year round screening between this use and the adjacent residential use. Vegetation removed for construction purposes or to eliminate invasive species shall be replaced with plantings that provide year round screening. Additionally, the six foot privacy fence shall be installed along the Cottage Road property line. For both 1339 and 1341 Boston Post Road. These further voted mission will be facing maximum advocate. He further voted that commission will increase maximum advertising building height thirty seven feet for both thirteen thirty nine and thirteen forty one Boston Road. We had heard the vote in that commission allows reasonable area of the residential use for each building they show. The group. The commission finds that increasing residential use on the second and third floors further enhances the economic way of building blocks. The accessible single and two bedroom apartments will provide a needed housing title within our community. He further voted that commission reduces the parking requirement on thirteen forty one Boston Post Road by three parking spaces. And a two to use shared parking per section eight point two of zoning regulations as the applicant has successfully done materials visual parking provided and proposed. Thirteen thirty nine Boston Post Road and on the adjacent parts of the east and west. That share cross access and parking access as originally intended during the two thousand and four they had used. Process. He had further voted that the commission waives a probation parking in the front yard for section eight point four. As the site layout is consistent with vacation parcels and provides for appropriate streetscape and site action access. The commission further provides proposal consisting of all technical goals and policies in cultural management act. And section twenty five Madison zoning regulations. The applicant's effort to handle the resurf- impervious surface coverage. In accordance with the state storm water quality manual and maintain adequate soil erosion controls to construction activities are adequate. No impacts on coastal resources are anticipated given the location of the subject parcel. In the event that changes and the approved plans are required as a result of public agency permitting to support the proposed activity. And Madison planning and zoning commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval is made based upon the funding of post use, the state committed use. And the district may that standards and requisites and conditions specified by the regulations. Now, public convenience, the water will substantially serve and the appropriate use of daily properties will not be substantially affected from being injured. The effective basis approval is June twenty first, twenty twenty four. And upon the specific special section on the land.
Thank you. Alright, all those in favor? Alright. All those opposed? The exceptions, no? John have his vote.
That's it.
John has a.
John opposed, okay.
Okay, alright. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Kevin Wright, our manager, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy birthday.
Okay, so move on to the next.
Two fifty one Boston Post Road application twenty four dash fifteen.
Good evening, Jeff. Not rid of me yet, sorry. Jeffrey Beatty for the applicant. This is the, uh, the Madison Oyster House formerly the side of the Winter Club. At our last meeting, we had indicated that we would reach out to the Department of Transportation to see about possibly relocating the driveway entrance of the site further to the west. In an effort to avoid having the driveway that exits Stonewall Lane be used in that capacity. Here with Mr. Man Dell, who's had the conversations with the folks at the D O T. He's gonna. Indicate to you what the, what the results of that, those discussions were.
Good evening, Chuck. Uh, we submitted a couple of, uh. Exhibits resulting of moving the sight line of driveway a hundred and fifty feet from the intersection of Stonewall. Uh, the sight line is actually worse, um, I don't know if you have that sheet.
The profile one?
Uh, yeah, the profile of the new driveway, I do have a copy of it. Okay. I'll demonstrate the, uh. Problem with the, uh, sight line distances. Let's see. So, it's right here. So we need a five hundred and sixty foot sight line. We'll look tech here, so this is looking to the west side. You can see the entrance is here. This pump. And this is all post road here. So you can see the dash line is actually the sight line. This is the existing green. So we have also two foot cut. C X will. Correct, coming, yes, if we do move.
I saw the surveyors out there.
Yeah, I, the, I had the state surveyors out there and we were looking at that specifically. Um, the other item that we did discuss was moving the entrance of Stonewall closer, uh, of the exit of coming out of Stonewall. Closer to the intersection, but the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Design Manual actually under, uh. Layouts, entrance and exits, spacing. Enchances and entrances and exits should be at least a hundred and fifty feet apart and a hundred and fifty feet from a public intersection. Uh, where practical, these distances should be three hundred feet. So we're at a hundred and fifty feet with the existing entrance, um, and I can give you that as an exhibit also. On the other item. What we did do is we try, I was talking to Fred Chaney of D O T, he was in charge of this, this area. Um, we discussed doing a left turn only. Um, the one way we can do that is we, we put a twenty six degree angle on the exit. Um, so it lends the vehicles to only, they can only turn to the left. If they want to turn right, they have to make some awkward turn to get over there. We were also thinking of some of the residents, uh, from that area, if they wanted to go to the restaurant to get out of there, they'd have to make this route, which almost wouldn't work. So instead of putting, instead of putting.
A walk. We will walk.
A walk, right.
It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, yep, I got it. Um, yeah, so one, instead of putting a hard curb in there, we can do a mountable curb, which if someone really wanted to drive, they can kind of drive over the curb if they wanted to. But most of the traffic would want to just go to the left and there would be signage, uh, indicating. So we're, our hands are tied, we, what we appealed to Tracy May, she will not let us use that for an intro, uh, for an exit. Sight line is just not there unless we had extensive cutting along that river and on other properties. So that's kind of where we stand.
Just make sure I understand that.
There's no out.
You're gonna need to really do some micros.
Sorry, so. So the crap procedure is they get to talk, we ask questions, then you're also gonna ask all the questions you want, okay?
Yes, it'd be. Anywhere to any other place.
Correct.
And you could do something like add another no outlet sign or some other thing you might.
We were thinking of additional signage, uh, dead end, residence only, no three traffic, I mean, there's all kinds of signage.
Alright, so the only other concern that I had was headlights in the ladies bedroom in the salmon house. Thank you.
That's why we put that twenty six degree angle on there, we could make it.
Second drive, exactly.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So that's why we put an angle on there, um, we could make it more severe, but we actually have to account for, uh, single units, thirty foot length vehicles. So trucks that service the building, the box trucks, we can come in, but you need the S U thirty turn, so we had to accommodate the turn. So we made that angle as severe as we could to accommodate S U thirty, we look at making it more severe, but I don't think that's gonna work. So we're really in strong.
So, but you could go. The entrance, the exit could go maybe further north?
It, it could go north, yes.
Actually, it wouldn't be firing right in their bedroom.
Exactly, but there'd be more clearing, but yes, we could actually go north, right now we're opposite the, um, drive, their driveway.
And have you considered like a hedge row also to mitigate some?
We, we can put hedge row, but then we don't want it into the sight line, so, uh, and if, uh, we didn't want to, we can't assume that they would want some plantings on their property and can't put it in town right of way.
I don't know, but you could ask her.
Sure, you could, okay, absolutely.
And, and just so the commission can see it, the, the drawing is up of what Mr. Maydell was saying with the, the.
Yeah, I see it.
The hard left right here.
So the hatch is the.
The hatch is the, is the existing, correct.
Drive.
Correct, in the dark, so we are turning it, uh, their driveway is right here with the opening of a stone wall.
So I guess the question then too was. Is it possible to bring it closer to Boston Post?
No, that was based on the highway design manual, we cannot bring it any closer, we, we looked at that.
You said that's a hundred and fifty feet now.
Correct, correct, we, they recommend three hundred. So we could, we do have room to move it to the north, but there's ledge and brush and there's a nice natural buffer right here, but we could certainly.
So this may not. The D O T manual. Does that apply on all local roads? As well, or does?
That's the recommendation.
It's a recommendation, so there may be flexibility.
There could be, but then.
That distance in conversation with our engineering department?
Yeah, there could, yes.
I, I.
Yeah, no, those, those were the recommendations, like I said, they recommend three hundred feet for stacking, right now there could be six cars here based on a hundred and fifty feet.
So what is the difference in elevations? From grade elevations as you're at, at, at the egress for the decent property there?
Yeah, so I, I don't see the spot grades aren't on here, but they're probably on the other sight line.
Yeah, it, it just doesn't really show that property.
Yeah, there is, there is a stone wall here, it's, 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 it's about level, it's level at the road and then the houses up.
It, it does.
Yeah, that, that, the pink, like, the pink house is pretty much elevated up. But the entrances are at grade, they're right opposite each other.
So this evening you wanted to provide an update to the commission and get feedback as far as the direction that you're.
Exactly, we, 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 at last month's meeting, we said we would contact the D O T. We did, this is the feedback that we see and given the. Unlikeliness, the unlikelihood of us being able to move the entrance further west because of the crest from the post road, that's no longer an option. So then we tried to figure out, okay, well, can, as some of the members of the commission just suggested, could we move stone, the entrance on the stone wall lane further south towards the post road? To avoid shining the lights in, in the neighbor's driveway and the recommendations that we not do that, because they like a hundred, a three hundred foot buffer. And we're at one fifty now, so our concern is that. And, and not to say that we couldn't discuss it with the town engineer further, but that's the feedback that we received as far as we wanted to share that information with the commission.
I have the same question as you, is that a requirement as if you have no choice or is it just their recommendation? So I think the town engineer would help us understand how close we can get to Boston Post Road. And offset that exit from the. Across the street.
Or what, yeah, where along that? Point, I guess that was my question, what?
Right, we, we, we did ours based on the comments, right, we based this on the.
On a, on the property across.
We based this on the comments from Z O T and the commission members had asked us to explore certain possibilities, which we did, uh, by the sight line. Um, and this was one, this is based on D O T recommendations, um, doing the, having the one fifty, but we have not discussed anything with the town engineer.
Uh, you're gonna speak up because we can't hear what you're saying, oh, you're talking to yourself.
Yeah, so let me just say, so the ultimate goal is, well, number one, we cannot use the post road. That's, 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 that's a given, so where we put this. We can make that a condition of approval, we can explore any possibility, we know what we want to do is mitigate the headlights with plantings, but we can explore any of that. I think the big nut on this whole thing is we have to come out on stone. That's, it's somewhere on there.
Alright, well. My suggestion, recommendation, we have a discussion. We'd have a discussion with a nice woman that lives in the salmon colored house across from you.
Absolutely.
See what, what options that she would consider in that. If at all. And then including possibly moving entries from the morning. Or if you talk to the town engineer.
If possible, yes, absolutely. That's why we're here.
I agree. And, you know, we're, we're amenable to doing whatever we can to minimize the impact on the folks at Stonewall Lane.
I want you to follow the law first and foremost, and I want to make that nice lady happier than she is right now.
That's what our goal is.
And we also have our clients deal with.
And I, I would recommend also exploring options, uh, recommend, your recommendations for signage for patrons exiting. And, and deliveries exiting the property, what kind of, what would be the most appropriate signage there before you're getting to the stop sign as far as.
Absolutely, right.
Directions.
Any other questions? Any questions? Yes.
Can I, can I speak, can I use the map as well?
Sure.
Uh, Nicholas Robinson, sixteen Stonewell Lane, uh, I know we had talked about the property across the street. My bedroom is right here. Right here. So every single person that comes out this entrance or comes up here, lights are gonna shine right in my bedroom. Um, so, and we also, so we have, like, my property is from, yeah, here to here. So not only are these people affected from the light pollution, but I am directly in my bedroom. Affected by the, by any of the light pollution that comes up this way or that's coming out this way or that's coming out this way, but specifically up here. So I think we're looking at the same issues here as we are here.
There isn't an entrance going in. So my question to you is, isn't there a tree line or some foliage there?
Um, for three months of the year, yes, yes.
Okay.
So when you, when, when, when they cut down all of that foliage, like when, I mean, everybody saw my property, which is fine, you know, that's just the way it is, but there is no. There's no tree line, there's no fence, you know, and it would take a pretty sizable fence, basically right on or right next to my property. To block that light that's coming in.
So mature trees might be a possible answer?
Well, um, my wife's got a pretty good green thumb, we have some big oak trees, but down at the lower level, there's tons of ivy, so we've actually tried to plant our own evergreens or something bushes. It does not grow there, we tried to remove that, it comes back, so it's pretty hard to put some mature trees. No, no, it's, it's because the property kind of flows to his, so like, so this, this right here is kind of, you know, at this point, if this is where the existing driveway is, it's, it's wooded here. Not wooded here at all. So, but even if it wooded here, still gonna get, you know, I mean, I don't want to wait ten years for those trees to mature to, you know, to. No, I, I, under, understood, I mean, understood, but I still think, you know, I mean, we're gonna see, if it's successful, we're gonna see a hundred cars a night flashing directly into my living room and to my bedroom, which is right here. So that was why when the neighborhood, when we looked at this originally, we said, we're all for this. This is an absolute nonstarter for us, and so we all said, hey, as long as this goes, you've got all of our support. So this, you know, a double entrance here, an entrance here, an entrance here, like those, we need to find some sort of equitable solution that's going to work. But exiting this way and light pollution here, light pollution of Karen, the Rosenthal birches house right here, my house right here. I mean, we really don't want to see a hundred cars a day going and exiting that, and we hope it's successful, so we hope there's a lot of cars.
You already heard that there's no solution on Boston Post Road, if you know.
We heard those were, uh. Recommendations. Okay, we heard recommendations, we did not hear that's a hard fast rule, so I, I, what I've heard on two, the last two meetings is both times recommendations, not like, hey, you can't do this or we can't do this. We also know that there might need to be some trees removed here for the line of sight or some other issues right here on the line of sight, we haven't talked about any of those things that could happen to improve the line of sight. All we've said is, hey, that doesn't work, that's the only way. But we also heard it was only D O T recommendations, so I think we really still want to find a better solution down on the post road. Um, not just for the three properties here, but for the whole neighborhood at all. Like, I mean, we already know how difficult it is to, we were thinking about putting a sign over here, I'm sure she doesn't want a sign over on the other side of the street saying left turn only, like, right next to her nice stone wall. And, you know. Someone after, I mean, whatever, we don't know where people are gonna go and then, you know, we've got cars going around here, but for me and for primarily my property here, it comes down to. Someone after, I mean, whatever, we don't know where people are gonna go. And then, you know, we've got cars going around here, but for me and for primarily my property here, it comes down to lights going in here. And then for them, and then obviously we talked about the Lebonis who live there. So I I think that's a big issue. And as I said, I mean, we are all for this project. But that was always a nonstarter. And from you guys itself, you guys said, no, that's that's what we did. And we reissued that or we. You reiterated that three weeks ago, four weeks ago, whatever it was. So that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Um, Ed Riley, we live at 33 Stonewall Lane, which is on Stonewall Lane, about four houses in. As Nick said, that was the kind of nonstarter for the whole neighborhood. We met, we loved the fact that a restaurant was going in. We thought that was good for the town and for us. But going out Stonewall Lane, we heard that it's very difficult from the state. Highway or DOT, whatever it is to to put. Different exits, but go sit at Stonewall Lane and try to and try to take a look with a four foot wall. You actually have to already pull out into the street in order to see it. It's very difficult when only 15 cars a day go. And my question to you, what is the sightline? How many feet from Stonewall to Mungertown? I bet you that is even less than a sightline the DOT requires for entering and exiting in the middle of a restaurant. Because if you try to sit at Stonewall Lane and attract any any time that's difficult, it's hard to get out. Currently, there's probably 15 cars a day that go out of there. And very few at night. It's a very residential neighborhood. You know, no one leaves after 7:30 at night. It's just the way it is. There's and there's no streetlights. And so right now, you know, I've heard the same thing Nick did is we hear that, oh, the recommendations are X. But from the neighbors. You know, had there been an exit there, we would have been up in arms the original meetings, absolute. Because it is very close from there to Mungertown. And by the way, there's traffic coming from two directions to the right. First, the post road and Mungertown. It's a very difficult spot, much worse from somebody who does it all the time than coming off of neck road onto the post road. That's a much easier turn than the Stonewall exit out because you can see in both directions. So we would say, I don't think they've come back with anything, but while we don't really want to do that. So we're gonna go back to where we are. I mean, changing the angle rate doesn't, that's not what the neighborhood was hoping to come.
A little quick question. I mean, I know.
There's two acknowledged speakers, Mr. Short.
There's always a lot of accidents at Mungertown. I know it's a very high speed road, but like. My question is, if there was a light on the on Mungertown and Boston Post Road, would it slow the speed down enough where line of sight wouldn't be as an issue? Like, or is it because you're you're at a lower, you know, I mean, so, you know, I mean, every summer we get accidents right on the corner of Stonewall and Mungertown. I mean, that kind of right in front of the Lebonis house. So it's like, it's just a high speed traffic. So but if it was a light there. Would that slow the traffic down enough with DOT? Would it be acceptable to move the driveways? Just a thought.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts and your insights. I think it's something after we see things we can't figure out. So appreciate that. Please.
One question I had for the commission was whether or not there was a traffic study associated with the initial application. Focusing on ingress and egress from that driveway on the Boston Post Road. If the commission is looking for any analysis as far as from a traffic expert's perspective, it would be helpful if you. Let the applicant know at this point so they could get you that information for following.
I think that's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be important to have once we understand where the possible exits are.
So that would be the applicant will need to present a specific proposal to.
Yeah, Chuck Mandell, if I can speak to that. This was not a recommendation by DOT, by the way. This is set in stone. They will not let us exit from here.
Is that documented?
Uh, from Tracy May, I have emails. I can certainly supply it. Yep, absolutely. In regards to sightline, there'd be extensive cutting over the neck river. There are environmental issues. Reducing the shade for finfish. It's a high, it's a very valuable area in there. And in addition, we'd have to gain easements from the neighboring property in perpetuity. And no one's gonna grant the easement. We'd almost have to go right to the corner of their house. We had looked at the sightline on there. In regards to a traffic study. Yeah, whatever, the DOT does not care. It's an existing road. No matter what we do. DOT is not going to allow us to come to exit from here. No matter what we do over here, it's not going to change the sightline. We have to exit from here. So we could get traffic studies and they could say it's the worst sightline that they've ever seen. So short of. Appealing to some higher power at DOT or the commissioner and and DOT, they already spoke to the commissioner of DOT. I think someone went to one of the state representatives. One of the state senators who's involved in this also, and they're going, what's going on with this project? Why has this not happened? Well. All they have to do is say the word safety and the state is not going to get involved in a potential accident here based on one of their reports. So. That's kind of where we are. So in order for my client to spend another $3,000, $4,000 on a traffic study. Number one, I know he doesn't want to do it. Number two, it's not gonna show anything. All it's gonna show is that it's a mess down there. And Jeff can speak to anything else he wants to.
I guess we've we've explored it with the DOT. It's not their recommendation. Their position is we don't want you exiting from the property onto the Boston Post Road. That's that's why we're back here. Our preference would have been to use the existing driveway in and out, but as. As as we, like, as we. Shared with you and the public, the DOT doesn't weigh in on these situations until after we get an approval, which is why. When we went to the neighborhood and told them what we wanted to do, we thought we could do it. That's why we're here today.
So. Secondarily, I would like to see you address what you can do to your northern neighbor to help him feel more comfortable with what you're trying to do. And I would like to see you figure it out. Where you could relocate a possible entrance on the side. That would satisfy the lonely woman that lives across the street. And see if you can mitigate the concerns of the neighbors ever showing me.
We will be happy to reach out. We will be happy to reach out to the town engineer, discuss it with him or whoever the engineer is in their office and. With the DOT to figure out a way that we can address this. But that is the unfortunate reality is that. We're gonna have to come out on the Stonewall Lane if we want to make cars to be to be exiting from the site.
So Eric, did you get the two points?
Yes, I did. And I guess my one question about the traffic. Your traffic engineer looking at Stonewall Lane, I guess. My concern is that there was never any sort of analysis at that point at that intersection as far as levels of service from this.
Well, I mean, they did address, they they did address levels of service here.
But as far as on the 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 town's road, I mean, I guess that was, yes.
No, we didn't. You're right. We didn't look at that because the plan was originally.
Changes to that service there.
Off.
Right. And my my point, my point is, if there is, we can't change. There's nothing. Yeah.
If it's as big a mess as you're saying, it's not, it's a safety issue, then it may not be an exit at all.
So.
I mean, we're at that point now, right?
Well, that's the the owner bought that property expecting to use the property and he can't just have people go there and and leave their vehicles there.
Well, I think.
Okay, so I don't know what the solution is then.
I don't either. Okay. Can't put an exit there if it's gonna cause havoc. On that corner, people trying to make a turn. So we need to understand what we're getting into. I understand it's expensive. I understand it's not what we planned. I understand it's not what we want, but it's what we got. And we need to understand the facts. Behind all this, we can make the right decision. So I think there's there's three points now. Whether we do the traffic survey now or after we have. Another assessment as to where that may go and if that changes the flow, I don't know. But there's the. Traffic flow and basically where the exit can be along that that road. And the third one is the light pollution caused by the cars on both the north and west, basically a whole area. That wasn't really an issue before.
Yeah, no, I Chuck Mandell, I can certainly address. The commission members' comments about screening. John, John Cunningham had mentioned the giant arborvitae, whatever, the giant whatever, they're mature trees, they're green year round. That's certainly an option up here. We can certainly explore moving this even, and that was a recommendation, the 150. So yes, we could move that to the south. Then you have the stacking and then, and I know the grade is significant up here, so that could, we could possibly eliminate the headlights. The one problem I do have. Is the egress.
I understand that. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I want to know what we're getting ourselves into.
Okay.
That's all.
That's right. Now, is that a recommendation for you to approve this or are you telling us the only way for us to get this approved is if we do a traffic study?
I'm not gonna approve unless I know there's not many accidents out there because of all these cars.
Okay.
I need someone who knows what they're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay.
Just like the state.
Yep.
I know even less than the state.
It seems they, oh, we're gonna vary 33 Stonewall. Sorry. It seems that there's a lot of property. Why can there not be an entrance and an exit? And if they need a little ridge over the wetlands or whatever, why can't it all happen on his property? He's got a lot.
And and it is on his property.
You mean on Boston Post?
Yeah.
This statement.
They just said that.
And their reasoning is, I mean, the flattest spot and the least amount of curve is almost the dead center of his parking lot. Headed out to row one. That's visual out of all three properties. Just like. Okay. I just, I just. Seems like there should be two that they should be able to handle.
Question on that, Nick Robinson, 16 Stonewall Lane. I mean, the previous property owner, I mean, while the Stonewall entrance or exit was available. It probably wasn't used as much as the main entrance. So the main entrance, the one entrance was pretty much used 80% of the time. And they allowed that. Is this because it's a putting in a new driveway that they're gonna have new state regulations? Because the previous. Winter club. Used that one driveway, probably 80% of the time for both entrance and exit.
You could probably answer it better, but from my understanding, the state did the assessment of the safety parameters and they say it doesn't fly.
Okay.
Maybe it flew before, maybe they didn't catch it. No.
I mean, it probably wasn't, it probably wasn't checked for, you know, 30 years ago. So I mean, I'm sure there's new regulations that have come out.
So as far as I kind of understand, there's nothing as far as a grandfather that is the DOT has approved this new entry exit on the Boston Post Road?
It was based on the change of use of the facility. So.
The volume trap.
Yes. That's how they got their hooks into us.
Any other questions? I'll be able to stand up.
Uh, yes. Alex Province, if you can unmute yourself and identify yourself for the record.
Hi there, Alex Province, 917 Boston Post Road. This is, this is a complicated situation, but I think at some point we've dragged the poor applicant through. Too much where I worry that. The viability of being a business is is at jeopardy. And. I'm wondering if we can't approve it. Tonight with. Something suggesting that they work with the neighbors to. Shield. Shield the lights, shield, they're probably not gonna want to be looking at parking lots anyway. Can can we not like move forward tonight with a solution of. Of an offering of some sort of future to be to be determined. Solution, even if it entails planting mature trees. If you talk to a landscape architect, they can plant using large vehicles, significant trees. So something like an IV ground cover shouldn't be a problem. But get the owners sort of on commitment legally tonight that they will make every effort to shield. Them, the lights, the parking lot, the building, you know, all the stuff that they're not gonna want to look at. My fear is, as I mentioned, if we don't approve it tonight, what what's gonna happen? We're gonna drag this guy through, you know, more months. DOT does not move quickly. Slowing the speed limit would be a a great option, but that that would take six months or a year to get the state to even move on that. So I think my overall point is the criticality of of making a decision tonight. And if if we were to deny. Who who knows what happens to the owner? This guy has a restaurant. And perhaps decides he doesn't or can't whatever afford to move forward. And we might be looking at something much, much, much worse than than a restaurant that we all sort of look forward to having. And I think to some point, none of us are ever happy with with what disturbs us. I I can speak personally to that. But at some point, we have to. We have to find a solution tonight. I I just worry that this is dragged on too too long. Thank you for listening to my comment.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to.
I we have exhausted all everything. Every opportunity to get in and out from the Boston Post Road. I mean, I had told the state, a lot of people I know were very impossible. Come to safety, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna give that. So the only one way to get out is in the town property, which unfortunately I own the property in this town. They attacked it over here, you know, this time. I'll do anything. I will do anything you guys want, including my school with your wife. Extend the white fence.
No, I mean.
That's what you want.
White fence everywhere, but I don't think it's gonna look good with you. I don't think it's gonna look good. You're gonna put six, six foot, eight foot. Green trees all around. It's gonna look good. That curb that we, Chuck is recommending is gonna be perfect. Nobody's gonna come. Right hand side, especially after 7:30, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, maybe the restaurant. I don't see any other solutions, so. Literally, we can go one more month, two more months, three more months. They're gonna come back to us. Nope. We have, I'm I'm with the stone wall, the little stone that I start building to save probably five inches. And they said, no, you have to break the wall and move the wall away two feet from our property.
The wall, it was already over there. So it's impossible to talk to. But I would do anything you guys want. Anything you guys want. I, you know, I'm not, not here to do that, but I really, I cannot leave tonight without. I've been proud for so long. Thank you.
If I could say one thing, I go, we are like Nick Robinson, Stonewall Lane. I'm absolutely willing to to work with you to get this over the line. Like, I just wanted to make. No, I wanted to make sure that, you know, I mean, if. You know, I know there's issues with the DOT. If we, if 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 the DOT sat, if 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 the. The information given to the board here, that the. The council is, if that's the final word from the DOT, we certainly don't want to hold up the project. We want to find an applicable solution. Like, you know, we want to mitigate that. Like, you know, I mean, we've also said that, you know, a viable and successful restaurant is absolutely better than the alternative. So we, you know, we understand that 100%. We don't want to hold up this project anymore. So I mean, as the last presenter said, I mean, we definitely want. To come up with a reasonable solution that's gonna work not only for me and my wife, but Lebonis and then possibly, you know, a consortium of the rest of our neighborhood. I think, you know, speaking ahead, I think you could probably come up with a solution that's going to be acceptable to move this forward. So that we don't have to be back here in a month or so and whatnot. So I I'm willing to work with you guys, willing to work with you to get this, to get this going in a more kind of collaborative way. So that we don't have to waste time. So I mean, I think it's it's my duty to, it's my duty to tell you like what we're. So I mean, I think it's, it's my duty to, it's my duty to tell you like what we're, we're at. But also like, I'm not here to block anything. I'm just saying like, this is what we've got. But we, you know, Cheryl across the street certainly has, has some issues. But I think if, you know, the plantings and whatnot, like you find a way, if the DOT says, this is only your option, guys, like that's it. Like, if that is their words, then that's what we'll do. I mean, I don't, I mean, you know, the presenter's right. I mean, arguing with the DOT is going to take another year and I don't want.
Right, thank you.
You do have another meeting in, in two weeks. This, these plans were submitted to our office at 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah.
With these suggestions and recommendations or these comments from DOT. I don't believe our engineering department has had an opportunity to look at the revisions onto the town road. So it would be my recommendation that the commission allow town staff to review the proposal of this is the location. And again, that also, it seems that the applicant is willing to work with the neighbors and the neighbors are willing to work with the applicant. So perhaps they can come up with a solution to present to you with a proposed, you know, to address their concerns. The only other item is whether or not the commission is looking for, which could potentially take more than a couple of weeks is comments from the traffic engineer regarding, you know, if they had to do counts or something like that. I don't know what they have on the stone wall. So that's something.
It would be a minimum of four to six weeks before we get a report from a traffic engineer.
What? I mean.
So I can get feedback from our town engineer regarding.
Feedback from the town engineer.
Yeah, that's not a traffic study or concerned about. Really want to know what the town engineer says about. Stonewall, sounds like a worse solution than going right through the middle of the program.
Yeah, let, let me just reiterate, reiterate, these were not recommendations from DOT. Believe me, we fought them long and hard and we went to the commissioner and they are added. So I can certainly get you a letter from Tracy May, uh, the lead in this. Yes, for the record, yes, absolutely.
The last, the last piece that was raised by DOT in their letter was whether or not the town was looking to have any landscaping replaced within the state right of way that was removed. There was a significant oak tree that was removed within the right of way. Briefly talked about this at the last part here and, and the commission decided to table that discussion to a later date. But if you haven't, and you're inclined to want to see any type of landscaping along that front, clearly not to obstruct any sightlines as they're they're limited anyways, that would require a licensing, some type of licensing agreement between the property owner and the state to maintain that landscaping. And prior to the town, of the state issuing any permits to the applicant, they're requiring uh, notice from the town, the selectman's office verifying whether or not any plantings, any tree replacement is requested and the selectman's office has requested the regulatory body of, of the site.
If I could just add to that, my understanding is that what you're talking about is replacement of plantings within the state, within the state's right of way. There is a landscape design that was part of the master plan that's been approved by this commission, which we, we fully intend to comply with. So I'm not, not, I, I'm not sure what benefit there would be to the town to require that there be additional plantings within the state right of way as.
Right, and I'm not saying there is.
Right.
But that's something, that's a lot that you have to check at some point.
Right. Well, if I, yeah, I, if I can speak to that, I did get that letter from DOT. They said that the, uh, the tree was taken down in error in anticipation of the sightline being done on there. So that was done, that was a mistake that shouldn't have happened, but it did happen. Obviously, they did not want anything to sightline. I wrote a letter to the first select woman, uh, explaining what happened. I needed a response from her stating that either, since they have no real jurisdiction, DOT is happy to get everything out of the right of way. But trees need to be noticed to the town. So the first select woman, uh, has not responded. Her response was if they want to plant trees, um, they, the state would require a maintenance agreement from the town, but the town would take care of that in perpetuity.
No.
We, well, we could.
I had a conversation with Tracy May on behalf of.
I, well, I, so I also spoke to Tracy and when she told me that, we can certainly flip it to the owner.
Right, the town would not be maintaining any trees.
No, no, that, but my, my, my point, my point is Aaron, that the town has no interest in maintaining it. They were asked to and they have no interest and that's why Aaron brought up the owner. And in perpetuity, it would have to be a deeded agreement of, that run with the land. Because once you put landscaping in there, that would be a forever easement.
But I think, I think the fundamental question is, does the town want a tree replanted within the state's right of way? And if this commit, my, my hope would be that there, there wouldn't be anything to be gained from doing that beyond the scope of the landscaping my client's already committed to doing on the property. And so that if this commission, as part of any decision that you made with what we're discussing, says, and we've also considered the, the need to restore planting in the right of way, don't think that it's necessary, given the other landscaping that's going to be done. Make that part of it, then that may, we're trying to figure out the sequence of events to get everybody working, pulling the, the oars in the same direction. And that way, the town wouldn't need to say to the state, we want to have this, there wouldn't be a maintenance agreement between my client and the state. And, and for some of them, in all likelihood, it wouldn't really benefit either the town, its citizens, my client, or the state.
Thank you.
So we get the input from the town engineer.
For the driveway location.
Location. And if you all work with neighbors to come up with something, you can tell us in two weeks. This is along the line of one degree compromises to mitigate any light pollution, mitigate any other issues with the exit and where that exit is, based on the conversation with the town engineer. Then in two weeks, we have the opportunity to.
You can hear it better, right?
You can, you can make a motion to continue the hearing.
Right, continue hearing to two, right, two weeks. And then what the intent to be is put you out of your misery and get this done. That choice of words.
It's going to be along.
Exactly, and they can be good people.
That's.
Yeah, I mean. Go ahead, Nick.
Well, no, no, it's fine, no, it's fine. I mean, I think it's, I mean, I'm, you know, I think the confirmation from you was, you know, the existing driveway versus the driveway in the map is it, you know, is the size and the positioning, the approximate of where it's going to go, you know, that's kind of one question. Um, and then two, you know, I, I think, you know, checking with the, with the Lebonis and the Salmon Color House, like, I mean.
So if I could just, I'm sorry. You all have that conversation.
Sure. That's fine, you don't need us. We don't, we don't.
I, I would request we be first on the agenda.
We don't blame you.
Yeah.
So does everyone else.
We're hopeful, we're hopeful that.
I'll pass that on to Carol and.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're hopeful that in the interview, being first will mean we'll be very, very.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. But I think you need to.
Okay, I have a motion. Continue, continue to invite. Second, I'm.
And, and just a point of what it was, so the next application, we can leave because you can't act on the site.
Right.
So.
Correct.
I can go home.
That's my.
Thank you. Okay, we've gone to the next year.
It's application 24-1327 Green Hill Place and 43 Boston Post Road, petition for zone boundary change amendment.
Good evening.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you. Thanks for hearing us. This is considerably, uh, first of all, Chris McKee and, uh, my office is, uh, 900 Chapel Street in New Haven. I represent the applicant. I also reside in Madison at 31 Hotakes Lane. This, uh, matter is considerably less complicated. Doesn't make it any less important than the other matters tonight, but with that, I will try to be very brief. Sure, everyone would appreciate that. The applicant sitting right here is Bruce Beebe. He's also the owner of the two parcels that are the subject of the application. Bruce is a lifelong resident of Madison. He resides with his wife and son next to the East River, uh, on the old post road. He currently owns and operates BD Marine. Many of you may know, the company that provides services for dock systems, mooring systems, other specialty marine work. Serves many Madison residents. He is fully vested in this neighborhood. Uh, if you've been to the neighborhood, you certainly see that. Uh, he's constantly making improvements or a better community. And perhaps most importantly, he is an avid and prolific runner. Uh, he has just completed his 111th marathon. Uh, and, and his 26th Boston Marathon. Having run four myself, it's a number that defies logic to me. But, uh, in any event, we're here tonight seeking, uh, to change two parcels that Bruce owns from R2 to the C District. The first parcel is a, a small 0.15 acre parcel, um, which is map 44 lot four and known as 27 Green Hill Place. Aaron, I don't know if you can bring up the, the, the map that Tony had done, uh, says zone change maps. The second parcel is a portion of other property that Bruce owns. The, the stated address of the property is 43 Boston Post Road. It's map 44 lot 16. The so this is 27 Green Hill Place here, that is its own tax parcel. And this portion is part of 43 Boston Post Road, the much larger parcel that for some reason this back portion is within the R2 zone. As is this. Uh, so the, the boundary line of the commercial district right now is this red line that goes like that. We're seeking to add these two parcels to the commercial district. This line right here, you can't read it, is I-95. And much of this land is wet. It's, it's, it's kind of wetlands, it's coastal resources, uh, consistent with, with the business that Bruce operates in this area along, uh, along the East River and, and has for quite some time.
Just give me reference, I'll just the restaurant, okay?
You want me to show you the aerial?
Yeah, friends and companies down here, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yep, this is the cutoff, this is the Red Tomato Pizzeria, okay? So this, this is 5.5, uh, 5.85 acres in the commercial zone. The portion we are requesting be changed to the commercial district is a 2.86 acre parcel. Again, the, the 27 Green Hill Place is 0.15 acres. There is a two family home down in the lower right hand corner here on this larger parcel. This parcel currently has a single family residence. I don't know if you've been by it, but I'm not sure how it's still standing. It is in very poor condition and needs to be demolished.
You didn't have it right? Raku, baby. That's about it. You would wild. It's the grouchy.
So unlike the other applications tonight, your commission in a zone map change, uh, application such as this, you have to use legislative capacity as opposed to administrative. You have broad discretion to change your own regulations and your own map of zoning. We obviously filed our petition, uh, in accordance with section 17 of the regulations that allows us as an owner of property to apply for a change of the zoning map. Abutting property owners were notified. I believe in this particular zone, only abutting property owners within 150 feet need to be notified. But there is a discrepancy in our application that asks that we submit abutting property owners within 500 feet, which I'm not quite sure why, but owners within 500 feet were notified. So it was a much broader group of people, including, uh, the town of Guilford and residents of Guilford, were notified of this request. Obviously, the notices were published in the paper on two prior Thursdays, as is required by statute, that statute being section eight dash three. Uh, and we're here at this hearing within 65 days from when our application was received by your commission. And that was at the April 18th, 2024 meeting. So we've complied with the legal mechanism to get before you to ask for this zone change. In your legislative capacity, you need to make a determination of whether the zone change is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is different than the plan of conservation and development. It is what is embodied within your zoning regulations and the zoning map. That is the definition of a comprehensive plan. You also have to make the determination that our request is reasonably related to the town's normal police powers. And that essentially is your ability to control uses through zone intact. In my statement of reasons, which hopefully you read, I, I tried to, to put my entire argument or, or petition in front of you in that statement. I would like to highlight it briefly. The, uh, the first point I wanted to make is that, um, the commercial district in our town, as you might have learned in the last several applications, it has some quirkiness to it, the C District. In fact, the only permitted use as of right in the C District in our town is a single family residence. So why are we asking that this be put into the C District when really all you can do as of right is a single family home, which is not what anybody who owned these properties would want to do here, if you know the neighborhood. So, uh, the key factor is that water dependent uses appears only in our regulations under the commercial district. Bruce's business is a water dependent use. Uh, his future plans for these properties are water dependent uses. Whether, and you have to consider this application without any particular development in mind. We're not proposing any development tonight, but anybody who proposed a development on these parcels would have to, in addition to getting a special exception permit, would have to make a coastal site plan application. And, and a finding would need to be made under the CAM Act that's consistent with the rules and policies of, of the CAM Act Act and section 25 of our regulations. One major component is, is the development interfering with water dependent uses? So that's sort of a circular way of saying that it is a natural logical thing for these two parcels, which adjoining and abut the existing commercial district to be changed to the C District. Again, you're not granting very much by doing that, other than allowing future special permit applications and future coastal site plan applications for water dependent uses and of course, all the other uses that could be put under the commercial district. There, there has been a response from DEEP, which I think kind of addresses this sort of circular reasoning. And it, it's saying that, yes, this will further water dependent use applications on these properties. But you kind of need to be mindful of the fact that if you're going to get a development permit before you, there's water quality issues that have to be paid attention to. Of course there are. That's why there would need to be a special exception application and a coastal site plan application where those is, issues are addressed. Things like stormwater, septic, what type of use is actually occurring on the property and whether it will harm the water or the environment. If and when we get there. So I think the DEEP response kind of reiterates our point that this is a, a, a natural, a natural extension of the C District. In fact, I think it's probably just left over as residential zone property, perhaps even before 95 went through. Because there's just no likelihood that someone's going to build single family residences here. Um, so the last thing, uh, and the statute requires you to do is you have to pay attention to your plan of conservation and development. And for you to see fit to approve the application, you would have to find where it is consistent. And in my statement, I highlighted some sections of what is now the old PLCV, I guess. But. Um, but I believe, uh, the encouragement of water-dependent uses is, um, well laid out in the plan of conservation and development, just by virtue of where our town exists on Long Island Sound. Um, no one better than Bruce could tell you that, uh, access for boaters to our town is something that he pays a ten, a very, very, uh, much of his attention is paid to that. Uh, boating continues to be, uh, a very important activity for our town. I think it's in many ways a reason why people come to Madison. Um, but as my statement indicates, there are ample support in the plan of conservation and development for the encouragement of water-dependent uses. And, uh, with that, I would suggest to you that the proposed map amendment is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, um, specifically the commercial zoning district and its inclusion of water-dependent uses as one of the uses that a special exception could be sought. Uh, that the, uh, the proposed zone change is designed to promote the health and general welfare of our town, and it's made with reasonable consideration as to the character of the proposed expanded C District and its particular uses with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging most appropriate use of this particular area of town. I did today receive Erin's, um, staff comments. I think I have highlighted just about everything that she had raised there. Um, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. One other thing I would, uh, point out is that our map and the legal description of the parcels that we're seeking the zone change for were in fact prepared by civil engineers Stevens and Associates. Chuck had to leave, um, but it's not, it's not really an engineering exercise here. We have clearly delineated the two parcels that we're seeking the zone change for. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
It's been the response of your votes.
I have not heard from any abutter, and it is not through lack of inquiring of Erin and staff in town, uh, as well as Bruce. Um, so, uh, I know the Land Trust is, is the largest owner of adjacent property. And I think, I don't want to speak for the Land Trust, but I think they're realizing that regardless of the zone here, they'll pay attention to what the next application may be, which is any development of the site. Um, because as we've said, it would have to entail a special exception and a CAM application.
So all the property to the north west of these properties, this?
I can get that map back up.
Yeah, I can screech. Does that show?
Doesn't show the owners, but I, I know their property and Bruce does as well. And Bruce had a discussion, we know, with Dave Roach of the Land Trust. They, they were fully aware of our application. Right. Yep, so this, this says right here on it, this is the Madison Conservation Land Trust parcel. So it's up here. Yeah, these three. This, this is the Wallingford Group, I believe that Gavin's property. It's the, the old International University's press building. Yep, there's a house on the street and there's like a warehouse building in the back of, of this property. Yeah. Yeah, we, we sent all the notices out. Um, the evidence of mailing is part of record. Yeah.
What's presented at the hearing?
I'm still trying to figure out the process, I said, so.
Just as long as everyone speaks up.
Yes, so.
You may see.
Chris, would you mind coming closer to the microphone here so that our clerk and everyone attending via Zoom can hear you?
Chris Rowan, Three Allison Drive, here as support person, and then a few years ago, been nothing good to me. Uh, also any waterfront development, I believe benefits a small town. I do a lot myself in other areas of the country. I know it's hard to do here as well. Thank you.
Open that up to the?
Yeah, say that. I don't see anyone online.
Anyone attending via Zoom, if, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. I don't see any.
Okay. All right then. Yeah.
When, when, when they bring something forward, yes, absolutely.
We're having trouble hearing you.
I don't see how we can approve this until we have that information. What information?
The waters.
What, what information?
Could have come to us, to the waters.
No, no, it's notification. So as part of a hearing process, abutting property owners, and as Attorney McKean indicated, any abutting property owner within a five-hundred-foot radius of both properties were notified as required by the application, and a certificate of mailing was returned to the land use office indicating that's evidence that they were mailed. There's no further requirement in the application process of evidence of mailing beyond.
I, I would, I would further submit that having complied with the notice requirements of publication source two weeks prior to tonight, mailing to more than the required number of people that were required to do, frankly, if they are opposed to this request, it's incumbent upon them to come and voice their opinion.
Yeah.
They had opportunity. Yeah, yeah, that, we, we complied with everything that was opposed to that. That's, that's what I was trying to suggest. I apologize if I was confusing.
Hand raise. Maya Schofield. Maya, can you unmute yourself and identify yourself for the record, please?
Let's see. Hi, can you hear me? Hi, Bruce. It's Maya. I see you when I walk in dogs all the time. Yep, I'm Maya Schofield. I live at thirty-seven Wildwood Avenue in Madison, part of, uh, the abutting properties that received the notifications in the mail, I think, last week for this meeting. Um, thank you for sending them. I do think it's important as my property, um, butts up against the wetlands, which, um, is behind the East River development and the publishing company that they were talking about. We also see Petrillo's. And I do, uh, walk my dogs a lot around, um, Bruce's property, and it's nice to wave at him at five-thirty in the morning. Um, I just wanted to make sure, uh, I appreciated what, um, the lawyer or representative said about why this would be moved to, uh, a commercial zoning and that if there was any concerns, it would go to a different, I guess, planning department. I was just, um, thinking about the, the positive impact that Bruce has had in our community and, um, wanted to continue or further our, our support of him as someone who is closer than the gentleman from Allison Drive.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, motion, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay?
I have a, a draft resolution, um, I can bring up for you.
I got it.
Yes?
voted that the Madison zoning commission's application, P four dash thirteen, twenty-seven Green Hill, P Green Hill Place in forty-three Boston Post Road, map forty-four lots four and sixteen, zone part two, application of the C B B. Petition for zone boundary change will meet the Madison zoning map designation from R two residential to commercial C District based on the following criteria. Second parcel is adjacent to the C District. Two is noted that alternate uses of separate single-family buildings are a special exception district. One of these uses includes water-dependent uses. Burn parts of the district is not allowed for water uses. The application successfully demonstrated that the expansion from commercial district to the sub-property is consistent with Madison zoning regulations, section six, in which parade users within the C zone are identified. In section nineteen, which are dependent uses. Both of these parcels provide direct access to tidal waters, which is supported by the whole project. Is further noted that this proposal is consistent with the Madison plan of conservation and development. POCB, as shown in page twenty-four, water-dependent uses, specifically identifying the potential preparation of that in the suburbs. Plan further explains the need to explain coastal land access to the suburbs. Any future development of these parcels will be subject to section twenty-five, Madison zoning regulations, closes of.
Something's taking. All right, all those in favor?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Cool down. You too.
That would be nice.
Another thing, too, thank you for volunteering.
Oh, thank you.
It's a tough job.
Appreciate that.
Especially here it is.
Take care.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five pending applications. Five-one Boston Post Road.
Yes, none of these require any action. Um, actually, you could table, um, twenty-four dash sixteen, uh, two fifty-one Boston Post Road. Um, I think that was tabled to this evening, so you can, uh, you can entertain a motion to table that to the twentieth.
Second? All the payers? Yes.
Each, each other application, Opening Hill Road is tabled. Uh, the public hearing is continued to June twentieth. The petition for regulation text amendment, the Goddard's, is scheduled for June twentieth. Uh, one fifty-nine Cottage Road is a site plan, coastal site plan application and site plan modification. That is also tabled to the twentieth of this month. Twenty-six Nathan's Lane is a public hearing scheduled for July eighteenth. Uh, you have one new receipt this evening, and the applicants are here, um, remotely, uh, via Zoom, um, to introduce you to, um, the project. So I'm happy to move, uh, them over and promote them.
Good evening. Ms. Marjorie. Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky, and I represent the applicant, um, for the, uh, detailed site plan review of the previously approved plan development district on the, um, map sixty lot eighteen, the commercial development on New Road. Uh, we've submitted a complete application package that includes, uh, for the subject parcel, which is two point seven three one acres, uh, a proposed medical office building, twenty-two thousand four hundred ninety-one square feet. There are a hundred and sixteen parking spaces, including a loading space, nine reserved spaces, four of which accommodate vans and a hundred and six parking spaces that are all shown on the site development plan. Um, the commission may remember that a traffic study was provided at the time of the commission's approval of the PDD designation for both the north and south, uh, parcels on, um, on New Road. And we've also submitted, um, architectural elevations and sections from John Wicco Architect. They have been working with ECA and have their next and hopefully final meeting next Monday, I believe, the eleventh. Um, John Cunningham is doing the landscaping, so we are, oh, we've given you a complete application package. This is detailed site plan review, uh, to implement the previously approved medical, um, office building on New Road. You have any questions?
When would, uh, Marjorie, when would you like to have the team present at the next, or?
I, I know that the dance card is.
Everybody here tonight.
I know that the dance card is quite full, but we would like to be on the agenda on, on the twentieth of June. And, um, it may be that something falls off of that agenda. I understand it's taxing for the commission, but that would be our preference.
I'll, I'll be zooming in. We have to do, there's so many other things.
We have opening hill.
You have a continuation of two hearings. You have opening hill road and, which is a, a lengthy application. You're starting an hour early. Um, and then you have, um, this follow-up of the PDD master plan modification for two fifty-one Boston Post Road that it looks hopeful that that should be a little quicker. And you have, uh, one new text amendment regarding, um, setbacks in a farm district for farm stores. Um, this is not a, a, a public hearing, the public hearing process went through with the, uh, master plan approval. So this is, this is the administrative site plan approval, um, as what they're proposing is consistent with the master plan that was vetted, um, at the map amendment change.
There, there should be some expedition associated with the fact that the site plan.
Tabled to the twentieth? Was that the motion?
Those who will be in attendance, they go for it.
Well, the worst case is that we run out of time in the evening, so we try. The, the meeting is set in the same structure as the previous, uh, last month's, uh, second meeting. So the meeting will begin at six o'clock, uh, with the public hearings and, um, end by ten PM. There's a recess. Uh, at eight o'clock, just a brief, stretch your legs, feel some fresh air perhaps. Okay, is there anything, um, well, I think the only item I, I, um, am asking for, Marjorie, is the drainage report. Um, I have not received a copy of that yet.
I understand, and, and Michael Harkin was, uh, showing that, I think, with, to the town engineer. And I will check with him tomorrow and make sure that it gets onto your desks.
Excellent. Okay, we'll see you next week at ECA.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, two administrative approvals?
So, yes, and I'm, just very quickly, administrative approval is the responsibility of the CEO to notify you when a minor site plan modification is approved. Uh, there are parameters in the regulations that give that authority. It's of a certain size. And if it's exterior work, it has to go before that. So these two, check those boxes. One's a gazebo at Concord Meadows, which is one of our largest, it is our largest affordable housing development, um, in town, uh, to. housing development, uh, in town, uh, to provide some outside space for residents. And the second is for the country school on Opening Hill Road, uh, replacement of a greenhouse that, uh, was damaged, um, as well as the, uh, installation of two prefabricated, uh, pavilions for where the children are waiting for bus pickup and, or a parent pickup. Um, can you just, who, who made the motion to table New Road? I'm sorry, um, Raquel is, didn't catch that. The table to the, the 20th, to the next meeting, Marjorie's application? You did it? Who did?
I think I made it.
Bob O'Connor. Okay, and who seconded that? Mike Bugda did. Thank you, Raquel. Minutes.
For the May 16th, I think, for meeting, I think it's President Myheart, Power, Snow, Bugda, Louie, Mike Paul, Morgan, Lisa, and Downs. It's a motion to approve. Seconds? Any comments or edits of lengthy transcript? I didn't see anything needs correction. Will you approve? As a favor?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Favorite motion of the night? I have no other comments. Um, just quick attendance for next month. I know Bob, you're out and Andy's out. You're via Zoom.
On the 20th.
Yes, on the 20th. I thought you were. I might, I might need you for a forum. So I will be in touch with you, but you, you may be on the hook. So. Tomorrow, uh, Monday. Can I do that? I can email you tomorrow. Okay, no other? Yes.
I'll be here.
Thank you. Good. Carol will be back on the 20th to share, yes.
Okay. Don't move. Second? All in favor?
Thank you. Good night.